To call this meeting to order. Council Vice President, could you please read the Open Public Meeting Act statement?
This meeting is called pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law, this meeting of June 16th, 2020 was included in a notice sent to newspapers of record and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has remained continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice has been available to the public and is on file in the Office of the Municipal.
And everyone, please rise for the invocation and flag salute.
Heavenly Father, in our hearts, we plan our course, but we pray you establish our steps. I pray that we seek you for advice. Let us not make decisions based upon what we know, but let us act based upon your wisdom. Please, God, it's Lord, we place this meeting in your hands. We place our hearts and our minds in your hands, so that you may direct us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all. Okay, Vicki, can you please go through roll call?
Council President Piazza.
Here.
Council Vice President McVeigh.
Here.
Councilwoman Dejolomah.
Sorry.
Here. Thank you. Councilman Fulper.
Here.
Councilman Wyatt.
Here.
Do we have Mayor Terstigny?
Hold on.
Yes, I'm here, Becky.
And Attorney Warner, right?
I did see him here. Just make sure I can find him real quick. Yep.
He's muted.
Yep.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, Vicki, could you please read the payment of bills?
The current fund is $2,192,195.79. State and federal grants, $494.97. Suicide Utility Fund, $69,261.29. Suicide Capital Fund, $136,782. Planning for Trust Fund, $1,122. Bridge Development, $630. Section 8, $3,715.98. General Trust Fund, $2,899. Agency Fund, $990.72. Per regular bill list of $2,408,917.75. We have Section 8 rent payments, $152,848.57. The prior council meeting, there was a table bill, which is in the old business, for $3,083.84. And the prepaid bill list, state federal grants is $2,704. Agency Fund is $159,907.92. For prepaid bill list of $162,611.92. The grant total of all funds is $2,726.628.8.
May I get a motion to approve bills?
The move.
All right, open for discussion, Councilman Wyatt.
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you.
Except I'd like to abstain from vendor number 7014.
Okay, 7014. Councilwoman Dejolomah.
Nothing.
Thank you. Councilman Fulper.
No, sir.
Thank you. Council Vice President.
Good, sir.
I'm okay with everything here. Roll call, Vicki?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejolomah?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. With that, I'd like to welcome Chief Robert Setner to give his monthly report. Mute you real quick.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, there we go. All right, so the month of May, we had 1,824 calls for service, zero homicides, 24 assaults, one sexual assault, three burglaries, 24 thefts, three Narcan deployments, 37 domestics, 27 arrests, one narcotics investigation, and two station house adjustments. There were 113 summonses issued, 39 moving, 65 parking, six for town ordinance, and three for other. We did not do any training in the month of May. And right now, we're a little late on upcoming events. We're hoping to put together some cleanups with Mary Jo Harris, but that's yet to come.
Okay. Um, let's, do you mind taking a few questions from council?
Sure, go ahead.
Councilman Wyatt?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Dejolomah?
I have nothing.
Councilman Fulper?
No, sir. I've actually emailed the chief several times this week, and he's been very responsive.
Okay. Council Vice President?
Just a couple of things. Chief, there was an increase of summonses from last month to this month, which is a good thing. It shows that your officers are, you know, working diligently through all this. The ordinances summonses are sitting at six. Your calls for service were, was it over 1,300?
1,824.
1,800, okay, so. If I may request through the council president, I would like to see underneath your calls for service, which you do list more of these, the violent, or more the more index, the index crimes. Can we start putting the ordinances calls for service? I like to compare the calls for service for ordinances against the summonses issued. Because what we hear, we don't hear about all the big stuff. You guys do, and you, and I don't use the, I apologize using the term guys, but your officers do, and you do. But I, we here as the council, we hear more from the ordinance side of it, because that's kind of what we're involved in. So for more relevancy in accuracy of reports or reporting, it's possible in, for the future to include the ordinances or ordinance-related calls for services in that upper category. And then we can compare it to summonses, which currently stand at six. So if it's 400 calls for service on ordinance, it's six summonses. Or if it's eight calls for services on ordinances and six summonses, I don't know how to really address that, nor, and I just tell the folks to let me work that out with the chief and yeah, give him a chance to appropriately work those numbers into his report, which he kindly gives us each month. That would be great. So if you kind of know where I'm going with that.
Most of the ordinances we deal with would be noise complaints.
Right, yeah, I don't know that. I'm asking if you can put that number.
Yeah, we don't have a broad number of ordinances that we deal with on a regular basis. Usually, if I probably broke it down, their town ordinances are probably noise complaints, where we've, you know, warned people numerous times, and we've got to the point where we need to summon them. Then we, usually, but really, we don't write many other. It comes to a few.
Yeah, I wouldn't know that without, if you're gonna put a category on the bottom, I want to see a category on the top. That's what I'm saying. So, for example, so I visit a, I visit a family this weekend, and they are having some grand trouble with some neighbors that are not being so neighborly in their duplex. A very, very, very mentioned duplex over the years of here our council. So I go there, that's not a noise complaint, it's actually a lot of complaints. It's a, it's a, it's a big ball of Pope Parry, per se, if we're going 80's a little bit here on our pot, on our Zoom meeting here. I, it wasn't a noise complaint, it was a lot of complaints. All I'm asking you is to do is, if you have that, just load it into the top portion, because you're loading in the bottom on the summonses. Right? I can't, I can't gauge on how well you're doing on summonses for ordinances if I don't know the number of complaints. You'd be doing an excellent job at eight noise complaints with six summonses. You could be doing a horrible job at 800 calls for noise complaints and six summonses. I don't know. I don't know how to answer that. I'm just being honest.
Okay, I mean, if you, if there's, if there's, I mean, what you kind of described there would be, would be a situation where I would probably think that maybe you have an address where, where somebody's having a problem with a neighbor. How we would address that is if the, if the address is forwarded to me, I would, I review it in our RMS system, and I figure out whether or not they meet the criteria as a nuisance property. When that happens, like I did one this week, I was given an address this week by the mayor's office. I looked at, you know, I went in, looked, there was more than three complaints in a year that fall in the category. These nuisance complaints are something that me and Attorney Warner work on all the time, because it's kind of, it's a, it's a different, different ordinance to deal with. However, so in this case, we had one this week, I was given an address, I did it, and I issued a letter to the landlord. Basically says that if this continues, you know, and now we're, me and Attorney Warner are at the point where we're gonna try and see what the next step is to take. Because it's, because it is a newer ordinance, how to deal with it.
That's exactly where I'm going with that. Ordinance enforcement against calls for service against summonses. It's all measurables. Thank you for doing that, and I think the mayor did a good job on trans, transferring that information to you on, for what I gave him this weekend. The second thing I have is, and I have no, I remember back in the day, when even my campaign, I even said, I go, you know, we used to go shovel out the snow and put lawn chairs out on the street, that's part of Peabody lore, that's what we used to do, but, and if you didn't do it, you know, your old man would give you a boot in the butt. But I noticed recently, enduring some 75 degree weather and no humidity, there's orange cones being placed off all over the street. I saw a bunch on Lewis Street and stuff. I'm trying to figure out what we, what we have going on here. There's really, it's not a snow shoveling issue, which is not even acceptable, but it's something that, like I said, Phillipsburg lore, which would have. Have you gotten any complaints or heard anything regarding orange cones being placed all throughout the streets, especially on the Lewis Street area?
No, I have not.
All right, well, I saw, I saw firsthand, so I'll, I'll let those folks know to call into the, to your department and let them know, or anybody on this call has seen that, let them know this. I guess saving spaces is now a thing. It's, to me, that's unacceptable, but that's all I have, Council President.
I guess my only question is that the trainings, they're, for obvious reasons, you can't go in person, there's no digital type, I guess, computerized training, things like that. You guys are mostly hands-on when you go out for trainings, right?
A lot, but I mean, like last month, when I reported, that was all, that was all training done over video.
The digital, things like that, and?
Yeah, we, yeah, we do. I mean, we will be doing trainings. We have another one that just came out yesterday that we'll be doing. So, you know, until the schools get back up, yeah, we'll be doing a lot of virtual training.
Okay, yeah, that was my only question as opposed to last month, to this month. That was it. I appreciate your time, chief. Did you have anything else to add?
That's it, thanks.
Okay. All right, thank you. Have a nice evening. Give me one second here. Okay, now I'm going to open the floor to public comment on agenda items only. These are items listed on the agenda. Okay, if you could use one of the signal buttons, any of them, I'll try to keep an eye out. And go over it a few times. Mister, I see a Mr. Brison, I'm sorry. Let me get to you real quick.
I had a couple of questions, I'm sorry.
Name and address, please.
We're on Main Street.
There'll be a three-minute time limit, Council Vice President, are you ready with that, please?
I had a couple of questions about the recreation fees.
Yes, sir.
I guess it's an ordinance?
That will be.
The resolution. Okay. Under pavilion use, there is, there's some letters, R/N/R/NP. I'm assuming R is for resident, and S for non-resident. I'm wondering what NP stands for?
Okay, um, we do have Mr. Coopazy here. He came up with, he pretty much came up with the whole thing with some input, but in large, it's his, his doing. Put a lot of work into it. DJ, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Council President.
Yep, could you clarify those few things for Mr. Brison, please?
Absolutely. So yes, you're absolutely right, Mr. Brison. R is resident, NR is non-resident, NP would be nonprofit.
Okay, I'm thinking it would be a good idea for, to have a legend on that page that indicates what those things are for, what they mean. So just a suggestion. I, as you can tell, I didn't, wasn't sure what NP was for. The second question that I had was about the field and facility fees. And there is a section in there about sports courts, tennis, basketball, volleyball. And I'm wondering whether those fees are for, are they for groups that want to use those facilities?
Yeah, so just like somebody would want to come in and use like a football or soccer field or a baseball softball field. If we had a group or a resident that wanted to reserve the sport court, say, to do like a tennis day, or we had a private group that wanted to come in and run a tennis camp, they could rent the sport courts for the certain amount of time.
So if an individual or two people wanted to play tennis, if the courts were open, they could go and play?
Absolutely.
They don't have to pay a fee?
Correct. This would just be to receive a permit and essentially take that area out of use for that designated amount of time. So if you would, you would then receive a permit for that area for the designated amount of time, and you wouldn't, you have control, just like the pavilion, for the, the whole day. If you rent the basketball court, you get it for that length of time, and nobody can tell you otherwise.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Brison. I thought I saw Joe's hand again.
Okay, there, I'm unmuted.
Mr. Minor, I saw your hand up.
Yep, you were right, you were right. It took me a while for us to get the clicks down, but we did it.
Name and address, please?
Joe Minor, 392 South Main Street, apartment 2. R 2020-124. I hope this is the first of many sewer repairs. At the Sewer Utility Meeting, the first guest estimate was $5 point million, which does not include laterals. And I still believe this would be a steal of a price. It's gonna be expensive, there was all kinds of ooh, ooh stuff. But it needs doing. I just want it. And the price 5.1 is low, not high. Items, the fees thing, I may have been misinformed. I, I thought the pool was not gonna be fixed till next year. It's either, I guess then, either already opened or planned a late opening, or is this being funded by, bonded for next year's repair work?
The pool is not open this year. This is a fee schedule going forward.
Thank you, thank you. Then do I want to bring up this one? I guess so. On the agenda is also the redevelopment of Northern Riverfront, which I, I, at the moment, like best Councilman Wyatt's proposal of reinvestigating Quahog Park parking for that, for revenue in that area. I don't like anything that includes residential units or glitz. It would congest Union Square, and it would be a deterrent from our old world look. We want to stick with this old world look thing, because we already put years into it, and I think it's pretty good. Was the other part of that. And there's an argument about how it increases property value. Well, it would certainly increase taxes, whether the value would go up or not, I don't know. But if the, if it did, it would increase taxes, and this is drive out our older homeowners, who probably wouldn't like the increased taxes. But on the other hand, I just recalled, they probably exempt, exempted. Okay. I just found a flaw in my own argument there. And I still wouldn't want, I don't believe the property values will go up if we lower the, what is it called? Our standard of living, our convenience. There's a word for it, I forget what it is. That's all.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Marissa?
Yes, hi, yep, yeah, thank you. Marissa Bracco, 465 James Street. And I just wanted to follow up to Mr. Brison's question regarding the field and facility fees. You indicate resident and non-resident, but you don't, it doesn't look like you are considering nonprofits. So are they excluded from this pay scale, or will they be offered at a discount?
I, I think, I think Mr. Brison asked what the NP was for, and we.
Right, but Section E, under field and facility fees, there's resident and there's non-resident for field houses, baseball and softball fields, sports courts, concession stands.
DJ, would you care to comment on that?
Absolutely. Hi, Marissa, how are you?
Good.
So what we're looking at with that is down in one of the lower sections, we actually took out the nonprofit rate that was originally there after having some meetings and discussions. And what we did was, we added a 50% discount for all nonprofits operating in Phillipsburg in the discount section below. So that would be a 50% discount off of the resident rate for facility usage.
Okay, and then is there also a list of included fields and facilities that you're gonna be putting out to the public? Because Delaware Heights isn't mentioned on this, and I know they have concession, and they also use that building as their field house, and it also was one of the buildings that hadn't been painted yet, so I was just curious where that building stands.
Yeah, so that building was getting primed for paint today, when I was up there visiting the parks. And once the, you know, this passes and our new recreation management software is in place, all of the facilities in the town will be included in that software for everybody to be.
DJ, I believe you cut out.
What was that?
Did, did you cut out a little bit? You said after the management software?
Oh, yeah, so after the recreation management software is in place, facilities show the fees.
Okay, we're not getting, did that kind of answer your question, Marissa?
Yes, it did kind of answer the question, but I, you know, as, as Mr. Brison said it as well, if there's, if the fields and stuff are in use by an organization or a group of people, you know, how are my children to know that they can't go play on the basketball courts today?
DJ, will there be like a reserved sign that's put up whenever it's in use?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
I can now, yeah.
Okay, great, sorry about that. We can certainly do that, however, if there is a group there, they would be issued a permit. And also through the management software system, there would be a calendar feature in there that will show, you know, what is available, when it is. And everybody, you know, in the town will be able to see that through the Recreation Department page.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Marissa. Thank you, DJ. Do I have any other hands? Give me one second to scroll through just in case. Okay. Let's move on to ordinances. Second reading. 2020-11, bond ordinance. 05, first reading was on 05, 19, 2020. Second reading, 06, 16, 2020. Bond ordinance amending Section 3A 6 of Bond Ordinance Number 2017-06 finally adopted by the Town Council of the Town of Phillipsburg in the County of Warren, State of New Jersey, on June 20th, 2017, to amend the description set forth therein. I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Okay, one. Joe?
I'm Joe, I live at 39, Joe Minor, I live at 392 South Main Street. Section 3A, does this replace a section thereby changing the bond from 1.2 million to 140,000? Or is this an addition? I, you know, is it a, is it 3A replacing 3A, or is it 3 coming after 3A as an addition?
Vicki, we went over this last, this was, this was to include tennis courts, am I right about that?
Yes.
Okay, it included, it included the addition of tennis courts, if I, memory serves me correct.
Okay, it's an addition then, it's not, it's, yeah, I was hopeful.
Was that all, Joe?
That, that's all, I think, yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Don't move. Second.
Discussion among council?
Council. Public hearing.
We just had.
Didn't I just have?
We just have public hearing.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Okay, Councilman Wyatt?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Dejolomah?
No.
Councilman Fulper?
Nothing, sir.
Council Vice President?
May I have just 15 seconds?
Sure.
I have a question, but if it doesn't need to be asked, I'm gonna ask it. Is that a timer, or just, Councilman, get 15 seconds?
Yeah, I timed you, you're done.
Wow. It was actually, I thought, I thought it was Mr. Minor getting back at me first.
Yeah.
I'm good. DJ, do we have the Director of Recreation still in line?
Yes, DJ's still on. DJ, you still there?
Yep, I'm still here.
DJ, without, I was gonna get into it later on, but as far as the plans for the tennis court possibly being a 12-month use, which we talked about earlier this week with the Recreation Representative, the Council, Councilman Fulper, is, nothing needs to be changed but this. is, uh, nothing needs to be changed for this, so you don't need anything else addition to this? I don't want to, I don't want to close it out with you needing, uh, extra money for what we talked about, possibly going twelve month use.
Um, yeah, so like additional, I mean, obviously additional funding would always be great. But, you know, that, that is certainly something we can look at down the road. The, the, for twelve month use, it would be an additional cost and we could always look into that. Um, I, I wouldn't even have a budget figure to look at that, but it would definitely be beneficial for us to go that route. So we have amenities year round that we can use.
Okay, so if we pass, if we, we go ahead and pass this tonight, uh, there's actually within your budget, we can make it work as far as what we have in twenty twenty or looking forward to twenty, well, actually twenty twenty-one actually would be for twelve month use would be closing it down, probably just the month of December. Are you comfortable enough going forward with this, what I just said?
Yes.
Okay, Council President, I'm good.
Thank you. Um, I have nothing on this. Uh, roll call, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman D. Rollamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Uh, next, one second reading is twenty twenty dash twelve, bond ordinance. Uh, first read on oh five nineteen, twenty twenty, second reading is oh six sixteen, twenty twenty. Bond ordinance providing for various twenty twenty capital improvements by and in the town of Phillipsburg in the county of Warren, state of New Jersey appropriating one million, one hundred thousand dollars therefore in authorizing issuance of one million forty-five thousand dollar bonds or notes of the town to finance part of the cost thereof. Like to open the floor to public comment. Think we're okay there? Motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, council discussion, Councilman Wyatt? Oh, I'm sorry, have you muted, sir? Sorry, Councilman.
I have nothing.
Councilwoman D. Rollamo?
Nothing.
Councilman Fulper?
Nothing, sir.
Council Vice President?
Good, sir.
Okay, when we hear, um, roll call, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman D. Rollamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Uh, next on the agenda are first reading ordinances. Um, ordinance twenty twenty dash thirteen, first reading oh six sixteen, twenty twenty. Ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg County, Warren, state of New Jersey, establishing fees for Phillipsburg Recreation Department. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Uh, discussion, Councilman Wyatt?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilwoman D. Rollamo?
Yes, in the discussion we just had, there was mention that uh, where the resident fees, the field facilities, I don't see that disclaimer for fifty percent. Where is it?
Uh, hold on one second. DJ, you still around?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
So what you want to do is in section H, under discount and billing of fees, it's the third tab down, nonprofit and not-for-profit groups based in Phillipsburg that shall receive a fifty percent discount off of resident rates for facility usage, but it does not apply to light usage.
What is light usage?
Uh, lights at Walter Spark or like at.
Oh, physical lights.
Yeah, the, the, the idea.
Okay. Uh, and DJ, I believe we have just a typo on the rate for the weekday use of pavilions. It says non-rez and nonprofit and non-res is for them res, so.
Okay.
Update that one.
Absolutely.
I'd like some assurance that has anything been put in place, and this may be either DJ for yourself or the Recreation Committee Commission, um, Rec Advisory? Has anything been put in place for a contract for the youth organizations that use the facilities?
Uh, nothing has been put in place now, as of right now, no.
Would it behoove us to do that before we adopted this? And here's why I'm asking. So fifteen years ago, it was okay for every organization in town except for one to pay to use facilities. Fifteen years later, the town of Phillipsburg wants to implement fees to charge and it's a problem. Now, I thought it was silly fifteen years ago and I think it's a little silly now that we would charge youth organizations of our town to use the facilities. But as far as precedent goes, this precedent was set fifteen years ago. The school district started charging, if everybody remembers. I remember. Because it henpecked and targeted one or two organizations in town. Just to show there's no ill will, I still think it's a bad idea that we would charge our youth organizations to use our facilities. My intent with this is to profit off of other people that want to hold events in our facilities and utilize things like the concession stand, the pavilion. We have some good events that come to this town. People should be able to hold an event. We should be able to charge if they use those facilities. And that's my personal opinion. I don't have a problem with the fees, so to speak. What I do have a problem with is all of a sudden, we're going to subject organizations to a fee that nobody else is being subjected to. And I would feel better about this if I knew there was something in place that wasn't going to put a forty thousand dollar burden on an organization that's grown used to operating at, we now know what cost at the taxpayer expense, which if I had to guess, it's about forty thousand dollars. Of taxpayer money's been going out annually, so for fifteen years, it's kind of a lot of money. But I'm still not in full agreement that youth organizations that have been servicing this town for decades should be subjected to an exorbitant amount of money they've never been subjected to. I understand the insurance and I understand the reason, and that was authored many, many years ago and just not handled. But my opinion is, I feel a lot better about this if there was an agreement in place giving our youth organizations more latitude against these fees. That's my opinion. I won't, I would vote yes for this if that was in place. With it not being in place, I'm not going to vote yes. That's all I have.
Hey, Councilman Fulper?
No, I'm fine, sir.
Council Vice President?
I got, I got a little lost in Councilwoman D. Rollamo's, um, comments. What, what youth organizations are we talking about? You keep saying our youth organizations. I, I.
Our would be the town.
Can you be, can you be more, uh, specific?
So fifteen years ago, the school district started charging anybody that used the school district for facility use.
Right.
The town of Phillipsburg never did that. That request came at the two council members. Two council members pushed for that to start happening. And it did. The school district charges every, almost everybody to use their facilities. And I can tell you, I know what the bill is and I did the research two years ago. How, what the school district collects from every organization in this town that utilizes it and outside the town, to be honest. And that's okay. It was a school district decision. Uh, the town of Phillipsburg never took that into, uh, respect when they adopted it for the town. It was only good for the school district. Why the town council would decide what the school district should do is beyond me, but they did. Uh, and that's okay. But here we sit fifteen years later, um, and when the money's on the table, it's a problem. But it wasn't a problem fifteen years ago for other people to start paying for it. So what I don't understand, again, I'd feel better if there was something in place that allowed our youth organizations to operate how they've become accustomed to, taking equipment, taking insurance out of the picture. I know the way things have been, I, forty-nine years. Forty-nine years, and I may have been a panther, but I played pal right across the ball field. Uh, it was a point in time where we all know how it operated in town. You played where you lived. And to be honest, there was a lot less conflict. But, uh, so I'd feel better if we knew our children in Phillipsburg would be able to play wherever they felt like.
Yeah.
Not every sport is funded. Not every sport is funded.
Yeah, Councilwoman, again, I, I thank you for your comments. I just asked you, what youth organization are you talking about? Because I, I'm lost in your conversation.
Which one?
I don't know. What you're saying, our youth organizations are going to be paying fees.
I assume we're going to hit Still Hill and anybody else that wants.
I, I assume, you know where you're going with assume.
No, I don't have to. I'm going to keep going.
Well, I, I was, I would suggest we start funding Warren Lanes because Warren Lanes is a private organization. Like Still Hill, like Still Hill, the organization you're afraid to mention, but I'm not afraid to mention. Uh, let's, let's, I would, I would, I'm, I'm speaking now. I would say let's fund Warren Lanes because they provide a service for our youth organizations or youth and adults, just like everybody else. So I'm not afraid to, I'm not afraid. I mean, I, I just got a little lost in your conversation, but if we are going to have equal across the board, uh, funding, I would, I would say let's fund Warren Lanes. They're a little bit in trouble as well. Let's not slap, uh, no, on that, right? Am I right with that?
Private business?
I'm, I'm just saying, I, I, I'm, I'm just talking about organization, you kept saying our teams. So if the, if.
Soccer?
If, if still, if, if, yeah, I know one organization that came on board, we had the insurance issue under the former mayoral administrative issue. One. That's our team. Anything else beside that, you can't, I would like you to say the name of the, of whatever you, that's why I got lost in the conversation. I'm just, I'm, I'm just being honest. I was lost in the conversation.
That's okay.
I just want to clarify that.
Maybe it was the tunnel on Route twenty-two West.
No, it was you not saying the name. I'll say the names. Still Hill. So.
If I, if I could just, if I could just interject here, if, if you don't mind, Council President.
Oh, absolutely.
So it, ju- just so that we, just so that we are clear, I've been in touch with the leadership of both Steel Hill and, and the, um, the PYSC, the soccer club, uh, and we, we did a rough estimate. I've talked to John Turnbull and I've talked to, uh, uh, Tim Zagor about that. Both clubs are looking at an approximate, you know, you know, field facility usage across an entire year at rate around or below a thousand dollars for an annual basis. And that's with a, and that is with, you know, the fifty percent nonprofit discount. Now, the council still can go in here and amend and take anything out and change anything that they'd like. And I'll charge whatever you all want, but right now we're sitting at a thousand dollars or below for a year.
All in?
All in.
Is that because of the fifty percent rate reduction, DJ?
E, usage.
Were you finished, DJ?
Yep, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. I think the, the people I've talked to, uh, um, said that they, especially with the fifty percent usage, um, said that it shouldn't be too much of an issue going forward. Um, I think prior, when there was just rumor and speculation, um, there was a lot of people who were worried, a lot of parents who were worried that they couldn't afford to keep with the same teams that they've been with. I think with the rate reduction, that seriously helped our team. Right now is the Phillipsburg team. Uh, there are other teams. There are other teams across the country, traveling teams, uh, rec league teams that have a business model or a nonprofit model that is successful and flourishes. Uh, there's no reason these teams can't work within the same confines and rules that um, are set in place across the state and, uh, this kind of. So I would be all for this because I don't think it's going to be a problem for these teams who have managed to operate for decades to adapt to a small increase. So I'd like to motion for, or no, roll call, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman D. Rollamo?
I'm abstaining because I got this at noon and didn't get to review that fifty percent, so I want to talk to DJ more about it. So I'll abstain for now.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
I got it at noon, worked at Newark, drove sixty-two miles back, took care of my family. I'm still voting yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Okay. Uh, second item on first reading, ordinance in their second reading. Ordinance twenty twenty dash fourteen. First read, oh six sixteen, twenty twenty, bond ordinance amending ordinance number twenty nineteen dash nineteen. Here to for finally adopted August twentieth, two thousand nineteen in order to revise the description of improvements to comprise the radio tower at the armory and the replacement of the town pool. Like a motion to approve, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Do open this up for discussion, Councilman Wyatt?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman D. Rollamo?
Again, I wasn't privy to why this has come up and how much the pool costs and what the bond debt was on the tower and what's left. Uh, so I'd like a little more information on this because again, there was no time to ask questions today.
It was.
So who proposed it? Who put it forward? Um, I don't have any information.
I believe who did come up with this?
That would be me, sir.
Yep. Um, do you care to elaborate a little bit, Councilman?
Detailed email went over, out over the weekend. If the Councilwoman needs more time, the inclusive of the weekends, then.
She, I'm sorry, DJ, I muted you, that was.
No, the email I got said from the attorney that a new bond should be done for the pool. Um, not revising an existing one. Did I miss one?
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be stated that a new bond. It would be recommended but not called for, so that's what we're, that's what we're doing. We're putting this forward and as council people, we can actually discuss it and vote. That's what we're doing.
Okay, so.
I, I've gone back three weeks ago from a detailed email I sent to all council people. Not going to get into disclosures of that email, but it was pretty laid out and then I keep people updating. So myself, I'm actually waiting for emails from other council people and their committees to give me something, but I have nada, so. I'm just doing my job alone, Council President, as the subcommittee moving forward. As people can tell from our agenda, we're working very hard. That's what we have.
So I don't know how much this pool is going to cost and how much money's left on the radio tower, except I thought radio tower was all-inclusive. We had money left.
Um, there might be an issue with, uh. Yeah, uh, Councilman Fulper?
Yes, Councilwoman D. Rollamo, uh, last year, we had the, uh, one point four million dollar bond for the armory set aside. Uh, at that time, former Mayor Ellis had extracted three hundred thousand dollars of it. We still don't know where it went. I, I believe that it did go towards the relocation of the equipment, which would leave us with approximately one point one million dollars right now in bond. That money's been bonded for, it's been accounted for, and the residents are paying taxes on it, which is why it would be okay for us to reappropriate the, the funds for a new pool for the kids to swim in Memorial Day weekend, twenty twenty-one.
And we can do that for one million dollars?
And we can do that for one million dollars?
We can, and DJ is here.
Actually, one-point-five.
Oh, we still have the three hundred thousand dollars as well that was donated to go towards recreation, so.
Part of phase two, bridge, part of phase two, up at the Bridge Point project that was going to go for the, uh, community center. The community center will come up later on this evening because, uh, different parts of our agenda will pull all this piece of the puzzle together.
DJ, did you have, uh, some information on the pool? I, I, I know you had, uh, spoke briefly to me about it probably a week and a half ago.
Yeah, so, so pretty much we're going at, we're, we're approaching the pool as not letting other people tell us how much money we need to spend on it, but us telling them how much we can spend on it, so that's the burden of taxpayers too much. We're looking at this as an all-inclusive cost, including any, uh, you know, God forbid, anything happens at a total of about one-point-five million dollars, and this bond provides a million, and we're, we're, we're going to get rolling on this. The next step after this would be to get some design proposals from an engineer on what style pool that we would like, and that would be brought before council. Before then, we would go out to any bid. Yeah, there, there was a, there was a three million dollar number that's been, then that's, that's just not what this town needs. Afford that. Um, so we're, we're going out again, saying we can only afford up to one and a half million. And, and that's the route to community pool with a bunch of amenities and a lot of the services being offered on an annual basis.
I thought that switchtow, that tower costs a lot more than that.
I believe it was only, it was valued at two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. I know it's in our paperwork from last year.
Yeah, that's, I, again, I just didn't have enough time to research it. Um. Okay. Done.
Hey, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Fulper?
Uh, sir, I stated, I do believe that this would be appropriate to pass, uh, especially since it would, the estimated cost to fix the pool, uh, which has been lacking uh, for the past three, three years. So they've been, you know, putting a Band-Aid over it. Um, it's unfortunate, but that we weren't able to open this year. Um, I think at a cost of half of that with, for a brand-new pool is more than, uh, is, is excellent for the kids in this community. Um, I will be voting yes.
Hey, thank you, sir. Council Vice President?
I know recreation is Councilman Fulper. Uh, I said last meeting in, in DJ, I trust, and I do. And I know working with, uh, the redevelopment, how this kind of gently ties into shifting of the bond monies, uh, that was formerly with the armory, which we'll get into a bit later on this evening. Uh, that's how that kind of pulled myself, the council president, into the fold and understanding what we have going on here. I will say this, uh, in DJ Capace, we have a recreation director that actually understands budgets, grants, and people, people of this town, and, and really, it's a pleasure to work with someone that actually realizes how we can balance things out. Uh, for the, for the betterment of our community, which is not a financial or taxable impact upon our community. We're going to go smaller on pool. We're going to go bigger on the amenities around the pool within the property. Uh, I'll let the mayor possibly, uh, lay that out when, uh, he has his report and has, has he worked with DJ and the mayor's been involved in the talks as well. So I don't want to steal his thunder and his thoughts. Uh, but I will say this, I'm very, very, very excited for twenty-twenty-one and the less of financial impact and burden and tax, more importantly municipal tax, impact on our society, uh, on our, on our citizens in, here in the town. And, uh, I, I wish everybody that, that, to get involved in this one because this is going to be something special, something unique to our area as we move forward going into twenty-twenty-one. Thank you very much, Council President.
Hey, thank you. Um, I would like to point out with, um, transferring as opposed to reapplying, um, transferring actually gets us more for our money. It saves the taxpayers, um, processing fees, which can turn out to be in the low six figures, which would cut into the value of what we can actually spend. Um, it's already there. We're paying interest on it. Um, it has not been used. So the transfer actually saves us money. Um, that was, uh, a little research I did after seeing the, the attorney's recommendation. So I think it's, it's either way, we, it would get us to where we wanted. This just gets us more of what we wanted with less processing and less burden to the taxpayer. Um, I would be for this. Um, Vicky, roll call, please.
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejera Alamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McBey?
Yes, good luck, DJ.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Next, we will, um, before we go on to the consent agenda, I have a, a resolution that we got extremely late. Uh, I know all of council did get the email. I, I hope everybody read it. I'm going to read it, um, right now. It is a, um, a resolution of the town of Phillipsburg awarding the contract for digester tank cover. Whereas the town advertised for the submission of bids relative to the digestory tank cover as identified in the bid specifications project. And whereas the town prepared and advertised bid specifications for the project, and whereas sealed bids were received and opened on May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, and whereas Ryerden Materials Corporation was the lowest responsible bidder with a base bid of one-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. And whereas the town sewer engineer, Remington and Burnick, submitted correspondence dated June first, twenty-twenty, recommending a bid award to Ryerden. And whereas the town council believes it is in the best interest of the town to award the project to Ryerden and discussed above. And whereas sufficient funding is available, as evidenced by the attached certification of funds. Now, therefore, it can be resolved by the town council of the town of Phillipsburg County, Warren, state of New Jersey, that the contract for the project is hereby awarded to Ryerden Materials Corporation in the amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. And further resolve that the mayor and municipal clerk are hereby authorized, directed to execute a contract for the same. Um, that should be twenty-twenty, resolution twenty-twenty-one thirty-one? Yes. Okay.
Is that separate?
Um, yeah, that, that, that came in, I want to say it's six-thirty.
So you're reading it separate? You're not putting.
Yeah, I read it separate from the consent.
So moved.
A second, please?
Second.
Okay. Open for discussion? Councilman Wyatt?
Have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Dejera Alamo?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
This is the agenda. Uh, no, this is.
Agenda or resolution twenty-twenty dash thirty-one, one thirty-one?
One thirty-one, yeah. This is just for the di- the contract for the digester tank covers and nothing else.
Okay, y- yes. No, no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Fulper?
No, sir, I have no questions.
Council Vice President?
No, good luck with that. We need to add this now.
I'm good with that, and, uh, roll call, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejera Alamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McBey?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm going to read all of the titles on the consent agenda going forward. Uh, resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-one, a resolution of the town of Phillipsburg County, Warren, approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for improvements to Hudson Street project. Resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-two, a resolution of the town of Phillipsburg County, Warren, approval to submit a grant application and to execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for improvements to Warren Street Phase Two project. Resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-three, a resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget of any county or municipality pursuant to NJS forty-A four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL nineteen forty-eight, SROs. Resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-four, resolution of the town of Phillipsburg, awarding a contract for sanitary sewer main replacement, Autumn Ridge Connection. Resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-five, resolution of the town council of the town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, state of New Jersey, authorizing refund or deposit reservation of the pavilion, or reservation of the pavilion. Resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-six, resolution of the town council of the town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, state of New Jersey, approving the payment of forty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars to Stephen R. Ellis for reimbursement of attorney fees and costs accordance with chapter twenty-seven dash four of the code of the town of Phillipsburg. Resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-seven, a resolution providing for the insertion of special item of revenue in the budget of any county or municipality pursuant to NJS forty-A four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL seventeen forty-eight, Clean Communities. Resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-eight, a resolution providing for the insertion of special item of revenue in the budget of any county or municipality pursuant to the NJS forty-A four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL nineteen forty-eight, Body Armor. Resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-nine, a resolution providing for the insertion of special item of revenue in the budget of any county or municipality pursuant to NJSA forty-A four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL nineteen forty-eight, Elizabeth Town Gas Road Improvement. Resolution twenty-twenty dash one-thirty, a resolution providing for the expenditure of practices certification in regards to Recycling Enhancement Act. All right. Um. Okay, um, does anybody need anything pulled for discussion? Councilman Wyatt?
I'd like, um, twenty-twenty, one-twenty-four pulled for discussion.
One-twenty-four, sir?
One-twenty-four.
Okay. Is there anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Councilwoman Dejera Alamo?
One-twenty-three.
One-twenty-three? Councilman Fulper?
Sir, I don't wish to pull anything, however, I do, uh, wish to make note that I will be abstaining from resolution twenty-twenty dash one-two-six. So I will be voting yes on the consent agenda for everything but two-zero-two-zero-one-six, on which I will be abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Vice President?
I'll pull twenty-twenty-one twenty-six.
Okay. Anything? Hold on, maybe I am. No. Okay. Um. Okay, move to pull resolution twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-four? Can I get a motion to pull one-twenty, uh, twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-four?
Make a motion.
Okay, second, please?
Second.
Open for discussion, Councilman Wyatt?
I'd like, uh, some more information. I, I really, uh, from what I have here in this resolution, I can't really, uh, discern exactly, uh, you know, what this is for. It says Autumn Ridge, but, uh, you know, but we're doing a expansion um, of a sewer line for Autumn Ridge. Maybe I can just get some information as to what this entails.
Yeah, um, Councilman Winter had his hand up here. Uh, did I mention from before, or is this for this ridge?
No, it's for this, uh, Council President. I was just going to, uh, chime in on the consent agenda. You, you asked for a motion to pull it. Uh, you don't need, you don't need to do that. So any council person can request that it be removed, and that's done automatically without further action by the council. So just for purposes of clarity as to the discussion that we're now having, you asked for a motion to pull, you got a second on that motion to pull, and now you're having discussion about the resolution. So I just want to be clear that procedurally, um, what we should be doing is a motion to approve, have your seconds, and then start your discussion. So you just want to reset that, and then, and then I will, I will try to chime in, uh, to Councilman Wyatt's, uh, question.
Okay, I'd like to resend my motion. And motion to approve, uh, twenty, twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-four. Can I get a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Uh, Rich, do you want to chime in now?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, so this was, uh, it's contracted through Remington and Vernick. Uh, it was a, a deal or, uh, an arrangement that was worked out. Uh, when the Autumn Ridge development was going in, it's related to the connection fees that were collected. And part of that, uh, expand or the development of that, uh, the construction of that development required improvements to the, uh, sewer san- sanitary system, and that's what this reflects.
And where, where exactly, uh, is these improvements going to be?
Okay, so, so, Councilman Wyatt, they are pulling up the, uh, the bid specs here as we speak.
Newbler Avenue to Warren Street is what it states.
Is that the portion, uh, that we have continually have problems with? That goes along the, um, the, um, drainage ditch, um, from Roseberry to Warren Street, uh, in that area?
Yes.
Is, is this going to enlarge that system?
Believe it's going to replace it.
Is it going to enlarge it?
From like an eighteen to a twenty-four, is that what you're asking or something like that?
Yes.
Right, no, so, so Councilman Wyatt, they're, they're installing eighteen-inch, uh, four-hundred-and-ten feet, linear feet of eighteen-inch sanity PVC sanitary sewer pipe. Um, they're also installing a small amount of twelve-inch PVC sanitary sewer. Uh, modifications to existing manholes are being performed as well. Some tree removal, associated, uh, site prep that goes along with that type of construction.
Is this, what I'm asking, is this going to alleviate our problems with, uh, backup that we now have into, uh, the, uh, housing authority?
I think that's the hope, yes.
I, I don't like that word, hope. Um, really, I mean, uh.
Dennis.
This is the first I'm hearing of it. I'm, I'm, you know.
Hold on, um, we have Stan here. Stan, I think, um, probably.
Be Remington. Dennis, it'd be Dennis.
Hey, may I?
Uh, Stan, how are you, Stan?
Yeah, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, this is one-twenty-four, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, I just want to say, I'm conflicted out of this. This is actually not related to bridges. It's in parentheses for the Autumn Ridge development. That's a development in, uh, next door on the Paco, right off of Route fifty-seven.
Right.
Yeah, Remington and Vernick is, uh, took that project as, I'm conflicted, uh, that's a, uh, Van Cleve Design project. So this isn't for bridge, this is for, uh, related to Autumn Ridge.
I didn't say it was for bridge. I don't know where that came up, but it's Autumn Ridge. I didn't say it was for bridge, I don't know where that came up, but it's Autumn Ridge, I see it here. Uh I'm just trying to ascertain, is this going to alleviate our problem? Uh with the backup and those individual cottages uh in the Housing Authority. And the answer I got was, we hope, and I didn't really care for that answer.
Yeah, I haven't been designed with a project, uh Councilman. So I I I don't wanna answer which uh properties this would alleviate the backups to.
Well unless I can get something more definitive, um I'd like to make a motion to pull this.
Table it.
Table it.
Um motion to uh to withdraw my motion for approval and make.
Yes, no, it's Councilman Wyatt made a motion to table, that's that's proper, so the motion, you just need a second, if there's a second, no discussion, and then a roll call.
I'll I'll second Councilman Wyatt's motion to table.
Mm-hmm. Okay, roll call, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejra Alamo?
No.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Councilman Wyatt.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay, uh motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash one twenty-three. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Okay, like open for discussion? Councilman Wyatt?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Dejra Alamo?
So this is a three percent increase over last year as the contract states, do we know what the school district tax increase was?
Uh, did? This? Did we pay a clarification on? How this was affecting our budget? I thought I read something on that, did anybody?
We can't accept it until we receive the money in, so we wouldn't see that, but what I'm looking for is if this is consistent with the raises being provided and that it's three percent even. So that we're being fully refunded for what we're supposed to be refunded for.
Uh Councilwoman, the rise in taxes according to the school board meeting last night was uh two percent.
Two percent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh how about uh which con- and I don't know if the mayor would know this or the attorney, uh which contract do? Does this fall in? Were they given a three percent or did they fall in that four?
Um the only thing I, Councilwoman, that I can state is I reached out to CFO Merlo today regarding these, and he had stated that the three SRO salaries. Uh are paid in full by the school board, so nothing comes from the town.
Okay, so it should be three percent, we're not on the hook for the balance.
That's correct.
That's all I needed, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes, uh no, sir, I don't have any comment, sorry.
No, no problem, Council Vice President comments?
No, I'm good, sir.
I'm also okay with this, um roll call, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejra Alamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yeah. Okay, Councilman Fulper, you had, you had nothing to pull, um. Council Vice President, um motion to approve twenty twenty dash one twenty-six? Can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, one, yeah, one twenty-six, I requested to have pulled uh just to discuss a little bit.
Uh can I get a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, Councilman Wyatt?
I'm not really in favor of this, but in accordance with our ordinance. I think that we would be remiss, and I would be remiss if I did not vote for this. And that's my statement. So I have.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Dejra Alamo?
Nothing.
Thank you. Councilman Fulper, any comments?
I'm going to refrain from comment as I'll be abstaining.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Vice President?
Uh yes, thank you, I did ask for one twenty-six to be pulled. It is a hard decision uh. For all of you's list, for everyone listening, uh we do get recommendations from our council, we get recommendations from our insurance. Uh we get. A lot, we but we don't really get uh the exactly what you should do, that's what you elected us to do, and actually to. To uh for for the five of us to make decisions on the best interest of of you and our community. This was uh, this happened, this incident happened before, I will be commenting on it later in my open time, but this incident happened before I was elected. Uh I do remember the incident, but most importantly, once it involved me and and when I was elected. It was. There was, there was something in place where if an elected official or any, you know, within our town. Had a certain number of days in a time period to submit this to the town for reimbursement or at least awareness of a of a of a litigation. That would put it forth, uh that the town would have to be on notice by a certain time, so the town could take the processes to be involved with the insurance company. Well, that didn't happen, and and these election, uh while I was uh after I was elected and on council, this voted had come up. A couple of times, and I stayed steadfast to, well. There was an incident, and I'm not, I'm I'm not gonna refute that incident right now during discussion. But there was an incident that happened, and it was the responsibility of that elected official to report that to our clerk. To move forward, to have the proper insurance. Protection and practices of what happens in these situations. And that didn't happen, now, it didn't happen by a day or two, or a week or two, it happened by many, many months. I was a no then. And I can't consciously, as you voted me in, to go against the grain, even on the recommendations of state council, whatever it shall be. I'm gonna stay steadfast to who I am by the rules of what was laid before me, it wasn't properly vetted. And I'm gonna be a no, Council President, thank you.
Um. Our ordinance is in our laws explicitly state that we are responsible for paying this. Uh I don't necessarily agree with it, I think. When you do this, potentially pay even more of our taxpayers' money. Um so I'm going to be a yes on this, uh roll call, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejra Alamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
I abstain.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
No.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Okay. Uh that's it for the old items. Um motion to approve. The consent agenda minus twenty twenty dash one twenty-four, twenty twenty dash one twenty-three, and twenty twenty dash one twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, roll call?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejra Alamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Next, under new business, uh request for uh proposals for redevelopment of the riverfront redevelopment area, subarea one waterfront north site.
So moved.
In the town of Phillipsburg, Warren County, New Jersey.
Yeah, I'm very excited about this.
Second, yeah.
That was a motion to issue the RFP, we have a second, somebody second?
I second, Council President.
Discussion, Councilman Wyatt?
Um I'd like to see what um you know, developer would like to uh perform down there, um so I'll vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Discussion, Councilwoman Dejra Alamo?
Uh no, this is. Basically just letting it go out to let people tell us what they'd like to do, it's not committing to anything, um so we could have actually put this out a year ago. Um but I I'm okay with it, it's not a lot of information, but uh from what I quickly read, um I don't see the harm in letting somebody come in and tell us what they'd like to do. Um so me and I do these on a daily basis, I think there's a few things missing, but we can work that out when the time comes. Um so I'm okay with it.
Thank you, Councilman Fulper?
Uh yeah, to the Councilwoman's point, we did attempt to do this a year ago, and we were met with nothing but resistance, uh it's nice to be able to get this stuff out on the agenda and passed, I'll be voting yes.
Council Vice President?
As being a, since being a council member and a founding member of the Redevelopment Committee, I've been with this, the former councilman, lots I said many times. I will, I will clearly say, this could not have been put out a year ago, because everyone was watching on our November election on how it was going to be. Phillipsburg was not open for business up until the first first Wednesday of November two thousand and nineteen, so that's where the temperature of the of the town has changed. So this this could not have been put out a year ago. Uh we are very excited to put this out, there are a number of developers interested, I don't know anything more than, as you do, Council President. Other than some good planning involved, but we asked everyone to hold back on that until we put this out. For uh legal and also fairness reasons, and we were very excited to get this out this evening. Uh and read it in a couple of times and and whatever we have to do, because uh we're changing. And this actually is going to happen, it's uh, we don't use the word shirets, we don't use the word. Uh we had this or the Blaustein School of Rutgers, no, we actually are going to put it out, and that's what's going on this evening, and I hope the towns. Folks understand that we're actually taking action, we're going to selling, be selling property for the betterment of our town, our tax base, and or more importantly. Things to do within the Phillipsburg community, so thank, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, um this is just a small step, but it's a pretty big step, there are quite a few people waiting for this uh. For this RFP to come out, and I really can't. What comes before us and what potentially could have in downtown uh because of this one small step. I'd like to uh ask for roll call now, Vicky, thank you.
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejra Alamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh? Council President Piazza?
Yes. Was there uh any other new business, Councilman Wyatt?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilwoman Dejra Alamo?
No.
Councilman Fulper?
Sir, I have nothing this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Vice President?
Uh yes, uh Council President, as we discussed earlier, there should be one more under new business.
I believe that went out late and well.
Yes.
Okay, hold on, uh Rich would like to.
Rich is the boss.
Yeah, Rich.
In my world.
Rich?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Yes, sir.
There were, there are two, two other things for new business, one Councilman McVeigh I just alluded to, uh that was uh you need a motion to uh. Issue a notice of intent to request proposals for a public-private partnership. For the renovation of six seventy-five Corliss Avenue. Uh that was sent out late, uh as Vicky mentioned, we had major issues at our firm today. Uh with uh everything, um internet included, so I apologize for that. However, for the benefit of the council and also the the public that's listening. The notice of intent to uh request proposals is just that, it's alerting, it's kind of a free alert. To potential developers that uh in the coming month or so, the town, we hope to have before the town, uh formal uh proposals. And request, and a request for those uh for contractors to come in and partner with the town. For a public-private partnership, and for the benefit of uh the public, a public-private partnership is is a in some ways very simple, but also in some ways very complicated process by which. A private entity. Funds, the redevelopment of municipal property. Maintains control of that property, but not ownership, does not take title to it. Uh and enters into a lease, essentially a lease back to the municipal entity, in this case, that's how it works, how it's being contemplated. For a period not to exceed thirty years, uh and I can speak more on that if the Council President desires, or just leave it go at that, it's uh whatever you want.
I don't need to elaborate anymore, I I don't think any more information is going to hurt.
You do want me to elaborate more?
Uh yes, please, sorry.
Okay, yeah, sorry, so. The concept is this, uh you have a property at six thirty-five Corliss Avenue that is in need of uh repair. It's sitting vacant right now, uh there's a host of issues that uh are wrong with it, everyone is aware of that, there's a a issue of cost to repair. And what the P three program does is it invites private entities to expend the capital upfront. In exchange for a long-term lease back to the municipality. So that they can recoup their cost, at the expiration of the lease term, which again cannot be more than thirty years. The property reverts fully back to the town, and when I say reverts fully back to the town, I don't mean that it ever left the town's uh ownership. Just that the lease would no longer uh be in effect, and the town would occupy and utilize that property free and clear of any lease obligations. So the notice of intent to request proposals is again, just that, it's an opening salvo, uh putting it out there in advance of the actual request. For proposals in an effort to uh. Generate interest and as much interest as possible, so that's the first new business or I've done that that you have to act on. The second one uh was, is a resolution. Authorizing the removal of one forty, one four seven, one forty-seven Mercer Street. From the tail, from the town's tax sale list, uh that property was slated to go to tax sale, we need to have that removed. As the liens have been satisfied, uh and that's being done at the request of the tax collector.
Okay, thank you very much, Rich. Um can I get a motion to approve the notice of intent?
So moved.
You get a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Councilman Wyatt?
Yeah, I'm interested in exactly how this would work and, um, whether we could save any money on something like this. Uh, I'm in for, you know, listening, so I'll go along with this. Um, it's also something that we could have done, uh, to move the complex down to South Main Street as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Dejrolamo?
I'm open to listen. Uh, the municipal building would not, might be my personal, uh, ideal P three. Uh, there's not enough revenue to support it. Um, and again, that's coming off what I learned at the League of Municipalities with Bob and the mayor. But, uh, I'm willing to listen till we get numbers. We don't have numbers at this time, so it's a little hard to say how I feel about it without numbers, but I'll listen and see what the numbers say. If the numbers make sense, I'll be good with it.
Um, Councilman Fulper?
So, um, so I believe that we're all on the same page, uh, with regard to this. Uh, yeah, I want to hear what they have to say. I do believe that the numbers will speak for themselves, whether or not we follow through with this plan or another plan, whatever is the cheapest for the tax-paying community of Phillipsburg. Um, I, I'm one hundred and ten percent in support of this.
Hey, thank you, sir. Council Vice President?
I know, uh, there was some concern and I, we listened to our mayor who, uh, loved doing, uh, P three along, uh, along with Councilman Wyatt downtown. So what we did was we kind of worked together. It, it, in, in mayor, if I may use your term, working together. We kind of took both ideas. We took the P three idea along. They wanted downtown, you know, they thought about downtown as Councilman Wyatt mentioned, but we don't own any property downtown currently. We own the property up here. And we decided to take the two ideas, put them together. And in addition to the fact that the state of New Jersey is wholeheartedly supporting P three programs. So that would make the ease of any type of communication or any wants or needs for our program and our state-of-the-art municipal building soon to come very easy instead of actually, you know, working it another way. In addition to, we had a six-point-five billion dollar bond and we are going to put that aside so that that's the ease of every, anybody listening on this call right now. We had a six-point-five million dollar bond. And what they wanted to do as far as building in New Jersey, if Stan Shrek, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that you need to reach the goal, you need to reach ten million dollars if you're going to do it yourself. So it eventually would have cost us ten million dollars. What we're going to do was we're going to, we're going to flip that into a thirty-year lease, still own the property and as our counselor so appropriately, I explained to everybody that comes back to us at the end thirty years. It's a New Jersey-supported program. I hope the numbers, they are, the numbers are going to work and we'll prove, and we'll prove positive of that moving forward with this support of New Jersey and what they want to do. I'm very excited for this. Council President, I'm all finished. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Council Vice President. Um, yeah, the, the goal is to get people into a safer working environment. Um, I've seen figures thrown around online and even people coming to me in person from six-point-five million dollars to eight-point-five million dollars, all the way up to ten million dollars. Our goal is to keep it as low as possible, not to hit rumored amounts um, and still provide a safe and pleasant working environment for our employees. I don't, they're working under some, you know, makeshift conditions right now. And this should have been addressed a while ago. Um, the state is very, um, they're very eager to give and work with P three right now. Um, we don't own property anywhere else that can accommodate a building of this size without buying anything or taking it. Um, this, I believe, is a good exploratory measure and we should be able to get some solid numbers out of it, um, some solid terms and see what works best for Phillipsburg without hurting the employees or the residents and taxpayers. So I'll be a yes. Um, you get a roll call, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejrolamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. And, uh, next we have a motion to approve. Rich, that was the removal of the one forty-seven Mercer Street from the tax lien list, right? One forty-seven, am I correct?
Yeah, there's a motion to remove, uh, property one forty-seven Mercer.
Motion to approve the removal of one forty-seven Mercer Street.
Is this a resolution?
The motion is fine. Yeah, the motion is, a motion is fine as long as the record reflects that it was removed from the tax sale list.
Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion. We remove, um, one forty-seven Mercer Street from the tax sale list.
Thank you. Uh, I'll second that. Um, discussion, Councilman Wyatt?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilwoman Dejrolamo?
Nothing. Um, no comments, no.
Councilman Fulper?
Uh, Council President, I'm going to abstain from this as well as from the very beginning of our proceedings. Uh, I had told you I had a personal relationship with the owner and I helped raise funds for them. So I do believe that it would be proper for me to, uh, excuse myself from this.
Yes, sir. Yes, we did. Thank you. Um, Council Vice President?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good. Roll call, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejrolamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
I abstained.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Thank you very much. Um, now on to old business. We have a previous tabled item on the bills list from oh, five nineteen twenty twenty All American Sports check number seven nine one one eight in the amount of three thousand and eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, motion to untable.
So move for discussion.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay. Discussion, Councilman Wyatt?
I think we have to vote on it. On table?
Oh, yes, sir. Uh, roll call?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejrolamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
I'm going to vote no.
Council Vice President McVeigh? Council President Piazza?
Uh, no. Councilman McVeigh there?
No.
He kind of took a run.
Give us one second. Council Vice President?
I got a kind of curb at eighteen-year-old from coming in the house and interrupting the meeting, so I apologize. I just had to shut that up, so.
That's a first.
It's the truth, though. Um, I, I had the door open. I'm sorry. I had to stop that. Uh, we are on, uh.
We're on old business. We're motion.
No, you're on, you're on seventy-nine one eighteen.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for discussion. I have, I've noticed, I have noticed.
Untable. This is a.
We have vote, rediscussion.
A vote on table so we can discuss.
I believe there were two council members that wanted to at least discuss that, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going with that. We, we have at least discussed, yes. I'm yesed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve.
We were going to discuss it, right?
Make a motion to approve then discuss.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, Councilman Wyatt?
Got a vote on that?
Uh, it's discussion.
We'll discuss, yes.
Okay. All right. These, these funds were expended and this, this is a reimbursement. Is that correct?
Um.
I believe this was paying the bill.
We need to come down.
For the reconstitution of the helmet.
What was that, Councilwoman?
I believe this was to pay the bill. Councilman Fulper had a question and the discussion was simply, did he get his answer yet?
I can answer that. I, I had reached out to the gentleman today and, uh, because I had just gotten his contact information today. Uh, I have not heard back from him. I did email him during, at the last meeting and didn't get anything. So I had reached out to Superintendent Kopeisi, got the contact information, reached out and have not heard from him. Um, that's, that's the status as of now, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Would you?
So an individual, an individual employed by the town of Phillipsburg purchased these items who, or had them refurbished, uh, and this bill is outstanding. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. That would be correct. I think there's a little bit more to it. Um, with regard to which department, they, they're, there's two separate departments. This individual should not have been able to order the equipment or order the refurbishing. Um, they did. I think what the proper procedure would probably be to rice notice such an employee and discuss it with them after we obtain the information. The, the bill does need to be paid. There's no doubt about that. I think we can pay the bill this evening and still proceed. Um, I do believe that we have a possible ethics violation, um, that we may need to pursue. With that being said, um, I won't oppose paying the bill this evening, but I do believe we do need to investigate a little bit further so it doesn't happen again in the future.
That's what I was trying to establish. It's a, it's a bill that is due to vendor and it was procured by a town employee at the time. Whether it was done properly or not, we owe the bill.
Oh, yes, sir. Well, I, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay.
Was that all, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wyatt, or Councilman Wyatt. Sorry. Uh, Councilwoman Dejrolamo?
No, I'm in agreement. Um, you know, we've got an audit coming up. We can certainly put it on the auditor's radar. We haven't seen that audit come through yet, so it's certainly something we can put on the radar to check as part of the audit. So it's a bill. We need to pay it. Uh, you know, the town owes it, so I'm fine. It was just a matter of Councilman Fulper was satisfied.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Fulper?
Um, I believe we could, we could vote in favor of paying this bill. I don't believe that we should be stiffing the company. And I hate to use the term stiff, right, but, um, they, they were, they are owed this money. Uh, it's probably best if we do pay it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Council Vice President?
I have no comment.
All right. I don't have any comment on this. Uh, can we get a roll call on that, Vicky?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dejrolamo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulper?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
No.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Okay. Next, I'd like to invite our mayor, Mayor Ter Sydney with his.
Oh. I liked him.
I'm sorry. I didn't call you Councilman like I called the Councilman Mayor, so.
Okay, call me anything you want.
Uh, no.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, my mayor's report June the sixteenth, twenty twenty, this will be the longest one since I've, uh, taken office, so. First, we would like to help small businesses move forward with their outside opening. We've installed some benches at Jersey Street to help restaurants in that area with some barricades. We continue to clean up the town, which has been a challenging at times. With cooperation and dedication with our inspections and DPW, the town has become cleaner and safer for our residents. The negativity by some will not deter our mission to continue the promise I made to everyone and this administration is doing the best with this endeavor. Since our pool will not be opening, there will be a Waters Park cooldown, which had, uh, clearance from the prosecutor's, uh, department today sponsored by the mayor, town council and the Phillipsburg Fire Department. That will be held the second and fourth Saturday from two to three P M. in July and August. I hope everyone will enjoy the cool water on a hot summer day. Social distancing guidelines will be in effect. They request we don't have it on a tennis courts, but having an open field. And I want to thank Council, Councilman Fulper and our superintendent DJ Kopeisi for this idea, which I think it's a hundred and fifty percent support. I just want to say, I want to thank DJ that I thought about this man during the process. At three o'clock in the morning, I woke up in the morning and I know that we have the right person running the recreation department. He's doing amazing things and I know I have support of the council with what he's doing also.
Absolutely.
Okay, the digesters that were voted on tonight will take care of approximately eighty to eighty-five percent of the smell at the soar plant. This was a promise made by, a promise made and a promise kept. And I want to thank the council with full support for getting this done. The process was slowed down for the pandemic, but this is money well-spent and will improve the quality of life in the downtown, the Delaware Heights area and the Persil Hill area. Should have been done a long time ago. The lot, the library will be open curbside on Monday, June the twenty-second with minimal staff. I spoke with, uh, library director, Deb Messling, Deb Messling, and she is good to go. And they're happy that they're going to start their soft opening with this particular, uh, with the library situation. The Waters Park pool is beyond repair. After three years of complete neglect and extensive patchwork and a, and in cooperative, cooperative efforts to enhance the quality of life for our residents here in Phillipsburg, the council, at the request of Superintendent DJ Kopeisi, has gracefully offered to relocate unspent armory funds to cover the cost in removing the old pool and restore a new pool for our residents for a tentative date of Memorial Day weekend, twenty twenty-one. The original pool was built by Mel Carty in nineteen fifty-five and I believe it, you just can't fix it any longer. The residents are subjected to no tax increase as this was already in the budget and accounted for. We would work together. As our, your mayor, I am committed to work with our elected officials and my department heads to deliver a better quality of life to our community and our children. And I want to say this, this is a great day for Phillipsburg. This is way overdue and I want to thank the council and our superintendent DJ Kopeisi for working together. This is a, this is a, this is big news for the town of Phillipsburg. And lastly, I believe our plan for reopening the apparatus on the playground was the right decision. However, after speaking with the county prosecutor yesterday, he informed me that we need to close the playground apparatus until his office gives the green light. I will continue to respect our prosecutor's chain of command, a man that I've known for almost fifty years during this tan pandemic and follow his recommendations accordingly. I remain committed to reopening Phillipsburg as quickly, safely and responsibly as possible. I apologize for the confusion and I am saddened for this information, but hopefully this will be done soon and we'll get back to a somewhat norm, uh, what started back in March. Thank you very much. Respectfully, respect, respectfully submitted, Todd M. for Sydney, Mayor of Phillipsburg. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. Uh, now I'd like to move on to public petition. Again, name and address, three minutes, one minute and maintain proper. Audra, I believe you had your hand up a while.
Yes, I did.
I'm sorry if I missed you earlier.
That's quite all right. There's a lot of stuff going on this evening. Um, I'm just wanting to see what. Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right. Sorry, sorry. Um, Audra Frank, I'm at two seven six Bald Eagle Drive in Stewartsville, New Jersey. Um, I read in the paper on Saturday, Jewel Gonzalez, and I was just wondering if I can ask the town council and the mayor. Uh, this is a really a special deal for her. She is the athlete of Lehigh Valley. And she makes Phillipsburg proud. So, and I'm not even from Phillipsburg and I'm proud of her. So if there's anything that we could do, some kind of proclamation, a key to the city or something, I think it's well deserved. She's, she's an outstanding athlete and she's an outstanding young lady. Thank you.
I, I would like if the mayor could comment on this. I'd actually spoken, he spoke to me about it. Right when the pandemic taking off, so.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, yeah, uh, back in when she won her second state wrestling championship, council President Piazza and I went up to the high school that night to congratulate her. Actually, it's funny you state that, uh, Audra, is we're gonna do that in our next uh, council meeting in July. It might, it probably be virtual, you know, to give her a proclamation. Uh, what do you think about, uh, what does the council think? Or should we wait until, because we don't really know when we'll get back to the regular meetings. So I.
Yeah, when we discussed it, we didn't, we obviously didn't think we'd be virtual this long. I didn't think we'd be virtual this long. We wanted to kind of wait for an in-person meeting, a more personal setting and meeting as opposed to in front of a computer screen. Yeah, I, I, we're, we're gonna have to talk about this a little bit. Um, you know, there, we may not come back for a while, um, depending on the uh,
the person's situation.
That are out there by the state. So um, we wouldn't like to do that. And we have discussed it. We're just a little disappointed. It might have to be via.
Well, thank you very much for the consideration. Yes, exactly. Before she goes to college. So thank you very much for your consideration and thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Audra. Thank you for uh, being a part of our meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Council Vice President?
To Ms. Frank, what, what, what we usually do is we like to defer, especially since it's a school-based, um, you know, as a student, we do defer to the Board of Education first, act first. We don't want to overstep our boundaries as far as that goes. So we're actually, uh, council president and I are in talks with uh, the Board of Education to see what they're gonna do. We like to see them act first. And I'm sure they're going to do something on top of what they've already done. But we don't like to act, we give them the chance to do that first uh, in order to keep the continuity of the chain, you know, the good, the, the proper chain of command and, and good understanding of community, what we have here. So uh, if, if they're done, if they're done with it, we, we have plenty to give Jewel. Like, like, she's one of my favorites. Uh, she's graduated with my daughter and uh, more, more importantly is uh, you know, any, anything for that young lady. It's an amazing accomplishment.
Okay, thank you, Vice President. Um, Joe Miner. Let me unmute you here.
There I go. Uh, Joe Miner, three ninety-two South Main Street. Uh, talks cheap solidarity. The Police Oversight Committee, its jurisdiction, every complaint, and I'll tell you what that means later, alleging unnecessary violence of police action written by a civilian Phillipsburg residence to which he or she was witnessed and signed by the complainant and at least one additional witness. The process, the complaint is to be delivered in a sealed envelope, which is marked on the outside, quote, police complaint, quote, to the attention of the town clerk who may not open the envelope. Within three business days of receipt, the clerk will mail the unopened envelope into a post office box known only to herself and the chairperson of the Oversight Committee. The clerk, the clerk will note and record the date she received and the date she forwarded each complaint for reference. The chairperson will note and record the date received for cross-reference with the clerk. The chairperson will never reveal the names of the complaint. Uh, and will call for a meeting of the Oversight Committee in a timely manner. The committee, the committee will be composed of five members, three citizens of Phillipsburg, one member of the police union selected by the police chief and the mayor or his selection from the town council. One of the citizens will be the chairperson. Three members will compose a quorum. The decision will require a majority of those present. The chairperson only votes to break a tie. The chairperson will not disclose the identities of the complainants. Uh, 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 the chairperson will retain the original complaint for five years and only relinquish complaints if subpoenaed through their reference dates. The committee actions, the committee number, members can question citizens and police without warrants and without the right to demand cooperation. After investigation is complete, the committee will make, will thus select one of the following three options. The committee can throw out the complaint. The chairperson will privately inform the complainants of the action and inform the clerk of the action referring only to the reference states. Second, the committee can refer the complaint without complainants to the chief of police or him to investigate internally. He can at most suspend the police person without pay or an entail completion of restraint and at least enter in his or her record that the committee found his or her behavior questionable. Uh, third, the committee can turn over the complaint with the identities of the complainants to a special prosecutor from a diff, different jurisdiction to be indetermined, hopefully of the state attorney general. Did I, what, am I at three minutes already?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I would ask you, indulge us for more, one more paragraph?
No.
Yeah, that's it, Joe.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate, I appreciate your concern, sir.
Well.
Oh, I cut you off. I'm sorry. We have Keith Gargone. Uh, hold on, sir. Let me unmute you real quick. Unmute option is not working. Can you try unmute in yourself? Oh, there we go. Yep, yep, we can hear you.
Okay, Keith Gargone, two eighty-eight Hudson Street. I just want to talk about going back with the um, the paying for the fields for the, for the fees. And I just go back approximately two years ago to the, to this past winter when um, everybody that was on council time, including the mayor at the time, from this year, including last year, are very upset that the two youth organizations have to pay the first youth center to play basketball games there. That's been a big problem for the last two years. Everybody's upset that we have to pay these fees. But now the town's going to turn around and do the exact same thing that they were so mad about. I just don't understand that. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Anybody?
All right. Yeah, I do.
I mean, of course, it'll be honest with you. I'll give you some numbers. It cost us approximately fifty-five hundred dollars to play basketball at the first youth center. It must cost the Falcons, if I had to guess everything, about two thousand dollars. I know everybody in the town was upset about that for the last two years that we're paying the youth center, the first youth center, which would be a town building. I can't believe they're doing this. But then you guys are going to turn around and do the exact same thing. And the only other thing I was going to bring up was unfortunately, at this time, I've been in discussions with DJ, the town doesn't offer every sport. And other organizations do. The, the, the soccer club has their organization. The town doesn't offer soccer right now. We have football, we have cheering, we have wrestling. I know DJ is going to be doing some of the wrestling stuff going into this year. So unfortunately, the town does not offer every sport. So what we do is we pick up the slack there and take these six hundred families and put them under our wing and put them on a football field and cheering uniforms. We do that because we're part of the town. And then I don't understand again how the town wants to come back and charge us to use the fields when we are doing so much for these kids. And if, and, and if it really comes down to it, like when, when it's a numbers game, I'm, I'm sorry to say this. I, I, I've always said I would never talk. I always like to do things behind and just talk in person. But if you guys really need a thousand dollars that bad, then I guess we'll pay it. I guess we'll pay. That's all I have. Thanks. Thanks for taking my, my time.
Sure. Um, the only thing I would say, I wasn't there for um, the, the two years ago, I was in an office. Um, and there, there is a different dynamic. The Falcons um, couldn't afford to pay that fee, that the um, the first youth center was uh, was charging. So they, they became a part of the town. Um, the town fees are a lot less than what are being charged at the first youth center. Um, they're used for things like utilities at the concession stands, which were, which you know, are taxpayer funded basically. When a refrigerator is on and constantly running, those are, those are items that people don't take into account. And if it is a thousand dollars, yeah, that's, that's taxpayer funded utilities without any type of representation by their elected officials. So while it was done in the past, um, it, it doesn't make it right. Um, you know, you just assume that everything can just be used without any type of expenditure. Just as false. We're just trying to make sure that everything is accounted for and properly um, properly charged, just to make sure that our taxpayers are represented in the best possible way. So that's all I can say about that. Did anybody else want to comment? Hold on.
Can you hear me? Was I, can I, I started having a.
I, I, I got you.
Okay, just one more, one more quick thing. Before the election, I don't know if you, if you recall this, it was, it was um, Councilman Wyatt, Councilman Piazza and Mayor Tersigny walking on Wilbur Avenue. And I stopped by to have a brief conversation about the Still Hill Youth Organization. And all three of you assured me that there would be no changes moving forward to the Still Hill Youth Organization. I was just wondering if any three of you should remember that conversation that we had.
Uh, to the Still Hill Youth Organization, we don't have control over how you run your organization, sir.
No, but you have over the fees that we pay on the town fields that unfortunately are taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer in this town and my taxes go to that. So you're going to tax me twice. Because if a football player, a kid that plays football for you guys is free, if he comes to us, we have to charge him. The families are going to ask, how's that happening? It's the same town. It's the same teams. Are you guys, if you guys are okay with that, I'm sure that's where we're gonna go.
You can ask five questions and expect no answers. Um, it is the same dynamic that travel leagues, rec leagues, all you. It is a, it is a very popular dynamic in this country. And it's a model that works and it's a model that's just and you know, everybody seems to be happy with it. You can have a private rec league and, and it can flourish. It happens all of the time. There, there are teams that travel all over the country using that system. There's no reason uh, that you.
But you're talking about travel teams. We're talking about rec kids that will probably never play high school sports, a lot of them. So we're not going to allow them. Yeah, I know my time's up.
I've let Mr. Gara go and go.
Yeah, yeah, mute me. That's, I'm good.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I'm good.
All right. See you Thursday. We have Mr. Morissette. Mr. Morissette? Yes, sir. Mr. Morisecki, say your name and address for the record, please. Thank you, sir. Uh, not to my knowledge, um, DJ, you still on? Oh, yes, he is. Hold on. Oh. Your mayor, did you have something to add to that? Hold on, I, I'm having trouble muting, David. I will hold you at your time there.
Can, can everybody hear me?
Oh, DJ, you're on. Yep.
Yep. So currently um, with the fee structure, um, we do not have, we currently, until the fee ordinance passes, we could not legally charge any registration fee for um, people to, for anybody to participate in any program. So currently there is no fee. Moving forward in long-term sustainability, we might have to look at charging a fee for youth programs. But as of right now, there is no plans to uh, start charging a fee for you. So a lot of the fees that were, a lot of the money that was already being expended in previous years, um, but we, we were already putting out for an organization. So we're not spending any more than we were in previous years. We're just spending the money that was always budgeted for everything else now. Team that is now town-sponsored versus non-town-sponsored team. Correct. It's a town-sponsored team. Just like if you go to a Y, just it's like if you go to a YMCA, you know, YMCA funds their programs. Yep. So I, I totally understand the concern where you're coming from, Mr. Morissette, you know, but that, just like when I worked at the youth center, when we had, you know, increases in fees and increases in costs, we were a business. We had to adjust our fees accordingly and pass those, and pass those on to a, to our consumers because we were a nonprofit. So, and what we're.
No, go ahead, Mr. Morissette. David, I think you're asking the same question three different ways.
And his time is up, his time is up, Council President.
Yeah, I think. If I may, any way you phrase it, it's, it's the same answer. You're just trying to get a different answer from the same question. Thanks, David.
If I make, if I may, Council Pres, Council President?
Sure, go ahead, DJ.
Yeah, in the, in the two and a half years I was gone, so much has changed. And we're coming back now to a point where recreation is not looking, it looks completely different from what I left to go down in Maryland. And some things are good, some things are bad. But at the end of the day, what we're is not trying to make it just for youth sports anymore. We're making it for all. And that's for every senior, every child, every adult. And this is, this is the positive route that we want to take with the recreation department. Are we going to compete? Yes, it's going to happen. But we're also going to level out the path to happen. I'm Don, Council President.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kapasey. We have Melissa.
Hello?
Melissa, yes.
Hi, Melissa Paulus, twenty-six A Glen Avenue. Uh, first and foremost, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, after the public comment last meeting, I failed to uh, acknowledge that. Um, again, I'm here about the Phillipsburg Housing Authority. And I take note that it is called the Phillipsburg Housing Authority. Um, and that you all are representatives of the town of Phillipsburg on behalf of. on behalf of our cons- your constituents. And that the residents and employees of the Housing Authority lack representation right now. Uh, they, well, not right now, but they have failed to have any type of representation when it comes to issues with the Housing Authority. I've been trying to deal with an issue that my mother experienced back in two thousand and fifteen. I have approached the commissioners many times without any success. I'm asking you, I am pleading with you to please do something. Something has to be set up to where the residents and the employees have someplace to go to get some type of representation. What just happened with the situation with the um, invoice for the equipment that was ordered by an employee that was inappropriate is exactly what needs to be done regarding the Housing Authority. Second, um, because I know I'm I'm limited on time, I sent the mayor an email regarding the smoking policy um, around town property and in-town vehicles. I did not get a response. I've brought this subject up uh, earlier this year. And I see there's nothing being done about it. I'd like to know what's gonna be done. Also, I had spoken to the mayor previously about getting department reports such as what Chief Stettner does at the meetings. I'd like to see the productivity of each department. And third or fourth, I should say, um, I mentioned about the admin position that was vetoed by the mayor. And I brought up about Alpha, and I want to clarify, in listening to the recording, I did say twenty-two people. I should have said twenty-two hundred people um, are serviced by the clerk's office in Alpha, which is lacking a registered municipal clerk for almost four years now. And they have three or four people in that office. And I think that your clerk is entitled and deserves to have an assistant. You see what just happened with this meeting and not getting the information out in a timely manner? Well, let me just end it with this. Peaberg's loss is going to be Clinton Township's gain. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for your comments, Melissa.
I I I would like some type of uh, answers though, because I I, you know, went to the Housing Authority with these questions and got no answers. I just sent out another email asking the protocol procedures. What do you do when you don't get answers? So eventually, some type of answer would be appreciated regarding everything that I just brought up.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Okay, I know there was one more. I think it was uh, yeah. Okay. Okay. Ms. Bracco.
Yes, Marissa Bracco, four sixty-five James Street.
Hello.
Um, I just, you know, back to Steel Hill. The nonprofit organization that has been around for fifty years. First of all, Danielle, I think you understand what the people, the town of Phillipsburg is saying, and I appreciate your input and, you know, the fact that you want to protect the town of Phillipsburg and the youth. But, you know, at the end of the day, the town program, which is, which is basically First Town, um, I think they had a problem this past winter during basketball. Not only did they have a town team where they didn't have to pay anything to play, but then they cut players and made the team small and didn't have every level. And then those children who didn't have to pay to play for First Town then had to come to Steel Hill and pay to play. And we at the Still Hill Organization make accommodations to make sure everybody can play, not just the best of the best.
Okay, I I was unaware of that, ma'am.
Yeah, there's probably a lot you're unaware of, but that's okay. Thank you for your time.
Who are you?
Thanks.
Who are you?
Email, just enlighten me. I, that's great. Um, I do appreciate your comment, though. Um, anytime somebody adds something that we don't know, it's always appreciated. Ed, I see you. Just give me a second. Not unmute yet. I don't know what's going on. Give me two seconds. Works. Oh, there we go, Ed.
Yeah, Ed Bullock, three forty-four Warren Street. Um, again, today, around the middle of the day, a tractor trailer was stuck at the intersection of Morris uh, Marshall Street and Warren. And it's not uncommon that tractor trailers come down Warren Street, even in the middle of the night. And if you picture Marshall, the intersection of Marshall and Warren, it becomes an intersection. And the tractor trailers can't make the turn. They get stuck there. That, so I mean, I mean, my my question is, must tractor trailers travel down Warren Street? It's narrow. It's really a residential street. It's, we have these tractor trailers getting stuck sometimes in the middle of the night. That, you know, and they're loud and wake us up. They can't make the turn. Um, it's, it's really not conducive to that kind of traffic, that truck, kind of truck. Is there anything that can be done about that? You have to, yeah, but it's pretty common.
Uh, Mayor Chisigni, you had your head up. Did you want to comment?
Yes, I did, Council President. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bullock, for mentioning that. I actually witnessed that situation today and many times. And it is a problem. It's a problem also in the wintertime when they come up there being stuck in the ice and snow going up what was called Boogans Hill back in the day. Uh, making that turn. I don't know what our engineer can do. I'm waiting on some other reports from things that I've asked for him, but I believe um, Mr. Bullock's complaint is totally legitimate. I've witnessed it many times where they, they jackknife in there. They can't get around and it's, it's, it's a problem there where Marshall, Warren into Marshall, there's a little up and then you gotta make that quick right. It's a real problem there with eighty thousand pound vehicles going through that area, because
Cars hit. We have had, I've lost two mirrors. Um, there have been other neighbors. I'm not saying they were the tractor trailers.
I agree with you. I agree with you wholeheartedly.
We have had cars hit over the years. Um, and uh, it's because it's narrow and I appreciate if, you know, that could be stopped. Additionally, if I have one more minute, you know, I, I heard you talk about the pool and I've gone to the pool since I was born. I loved going to the pool, but I can tell you in the last two years, the, the pool was a disgrace. It wasn't, well, it was poorly managed. There were people, there were people that were unruly. Everything was uh, was a disaster there. And I hope that that money is well spent uh, on the pool a- and it, it does give us quality of life because it was terrible the last couple of years. Um, and for all that money to be spent, I hope you have good management because there was offensive language, offensive music, people arguing that were not asked to leave. There were people I know decided not to go back anymore because of the behavior, that type of thing. So it's a lot of money to be spent and I hope that uh, it's controlled when we open it up again. Thanks.
Hi, DJ, did you want to comment?
I I did. Thank you, Mr. Bullock, for bringing that, that up to me. Uh, you know, you're not the only person that has told me that and I I I can guarantee you that, you know, under my direction, we, we will not have those problems moving forward. I believe in high-quality resident services and that's what you guys are gonna get.
Thank you, DJ. Couple more yet. Um, Lee, let me unmute you real quick. Okay, you're unmuted, Nicole?
Hello.
And your name and address, please?
Yep, Nicole Lee, nine eight five Wilbur Avenue.
Hello.
Hello, how are you? Um, great. As a, just a quick follow-up. So in the case, if it does happen that the town is unable to accommodate all of the youth who wish to participate in sports in the town, um, and now, you know, just, you know, if it were to be that they would then have to pay to play, um, have we also considered charging non-residents to publicly park? Um, it's my understanding that we've removed the kiosks because taxpayers so I was just curious if we could explore other avenues here where we're actually charging non-residents versus the people who live here.
Yeah, I do believe we brought that up in a previous council. Maybe Councilman Wyatt had brought that up. Uh, we, we haven't revisited that. That is a good point. I appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Uh, there was I thought I saw one more. Um, just give me one second to find it. I guess not. Uh, was there anything else? Anybody else? Okay, um, I would like to uh, go back to the table resolution. We have Dennis Yoder. If we can square that up tonight, I'd like to do that. Let me find you here, Dennis. Make a motion to untable Resolution twenty twenty dash one twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
I moved.
A second, please?
Second.
Alright. Dennis, I thought you were on. Where are you? Maybe he won't back off. Vicky, is he still there?
Oh, let me check. He was.
Do we vote on table?
We did not. No, I'm sorry. Uh, roll call?
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dieter Alno?
Yes.
Councilman Fulfer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVey? Council President Piazza?
Weirded.
Yes, sorry about that. Is he there, Vicky?
I didn't get a response. He was just here. Let me see if I can grab him. I don't know. I don't know what happened.
Okay, well, I guess we'll motion to table.
Motion.
Sorry. Nah, that's it. Can I get a second, please?
Second, because you said please.
Please. Oh, man. Roll call, Vicky.
Councilman Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dieter Alno?
Yes.
Councilman Fulfer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVey?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't know if I want.
Hey, we tried. Um, now I'd like to open the floor to public, or uh, to council at this time. Um, Councilman Wyatt?
Yes, I think that we can address um, the concerns on Warren Street and the tractor colors by uh, weight limit uh, on the, uh, you know, on uh, yeah, Warren Street at uh, Heckman and uh, out at Hudson, when they come up the um, highway um, at birth um, that they don't go any further. Uh, or you could limit it right at twenty-two, so uh, tractor trailers uh, don't even get off the highway on the first street and get into that situation. I think that that would be uh, way to hopefully eliminate uh, that situation because they're following a GPS possibly trying to get um, you know, somewhere and that's the GPS is sending them the shortest route. And uh, if you put that uh, in the, in the ordinance, it comes up on the GPS that uh, you know, would eliminate them making that turn on First Street. I think that that would be appropriate to do that. Um, something to consider. Um, I had hopes uh, that we would discuss the kiosk, the Riverside Way at the last um, work. Um, so I'll bring it up again um, as a revenue. Um, I know we're going out uh, for uh, proposals. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, we should be deriving some income from that lot. Uh, because um, if you go down there, when Easton have functions and even um, lately, uh, we're getting people walking across the bridge to Pennsylvania. Um, and uh, we could be reaping some income for that parking lot. So I will, I won't belabor that anymore. Uh, if you don't want to put it on a work session, we won't have a work session now till September, so you know, it, it's, you know, become very mute. Um, so I won't bring it up anymore. Um, and one other thing, uh, if the mayor's still on, I'd like to uh, have uh, maybe a meeting with uh, Dennis um, to exactly uh, you know, enlighten me as to, you know, what the, what that uh, resolution is about. Maybe we meet out there and he can explain it to me uh, so that I'm satisfied that we're actually going to uh, remediate a, a situation that currently exists there and not make it worse.
Anytime you want, Mayor.
You get a hold of Dennis, I'm available.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Council. Councilwoman Dieter Alno?
Uh, so no update on Municipal Alliance. The MPP has been very busy. Uh, we do meet almost four times a week. Uh, as many people have noticed, Chappell Park uh, is underway uh, with the help of the Police Department. Uh, everything's been power washed except the gazebo, and the gazebo will be happening next week. Um, the historic, uh, so far benches planners, we've discussed the trash, trash receptacles getting replaced. Uh, window dressing is going to take place on August first, which is gonna be a community called the Action Day uh, to get people to help clean up uh, the park. And we're gonna do some new landscaping. We're getting ready to go into phase two, which will consist of bicycle racks, curbside crossing, painting the white lines and the street art. So I will send that update out so everybody has it. As well as we are gonna be getting swatches on new um, benches and the color swatches are gonna become in, in front of council so we can see what the color's gonna look like before they go into place. Um, the funds to cover the materials and labor, just so everybody knows where the funding's coming from, the cleaning, painting, and staining was actually done by the town employees. So thank the mayor and um, Public Works for that. And that all came through the CBCR program uh, with Northwest Cap as well. The gazebo is set to be painted on Monday if all goes well uh, and power washed. So I have some additional updates that'll be coming out on that. The Historic Commission met yesterday. Uh, that was an advertised meeting. The mayor made appointments to that. Uh, so everybody knows Bernie Rooney was appointed chairman. Uh, Randy Piazza Senior, the vice chair, Audra Frank uh, was reinstated. Ken Miller was reinstated. And Tony Austin was appointed. Uh, myself and the mayor are guests and um, we did get validation from Angela Knowles that we can proceed uh, because the plan that was adopted as part of the master plan for the historic content uh, is approved already by the planning board. So we are good to go uh, with some consistent standards that are already in place. Other things, uh, so the mayor and I met with Romark Logistics. For those that don't know, White Claw is gonna be operated by Romark Logistics. That's a logistics firm, if you're not familiar with the warehouse industry. They will be running the show. They will be doing the hiring. They're a family-owned operation of They're a family owned operation of many years. They have many warehouses across the United States. They will be hiring anywhere from 15 to 60 people before the end of the year. And those jobs are available on Indeed. Just type in RoMark Logistics and I have published that information on my Facebook page for anybody that's interested. So it was myself, the mayor, Yvette Day from Community Resources and the Envision Center through the Housing Authority Agreement and Jessica Hoffman from our Norwest Cap and Barbara Grusson from HUD came in. They were very excited to come in for that opportunity. And we are planning a groundbreaking for September so that hopefully things will be released and everybody can be there for that groundbreaking. Just a quick reminder, I know my phone was busy all week. Most of them were police matters. I encourage everybody, if you have an emergency, please call the police. Don't call us. They should really be the first person you reach out to in an emergency. I do want to thank Mayor Tersigny for acting on that outdoor solution. We had talked about it a couple of times and he made that happen very quickly. So thank you. Everyone downtown was really excited that we just made something happen for people coming in. So as businesses are reopening, I encourage everybody to go out and visit our small businesses. I did twice since they opened. So please take the opportunity to do that. Wanted to thank Bernadine May, the Emergency Management for hosting the annual flag retirement at Walters Park this weekend. Again, I think it was my fourth one I've been to, third or fourth one. Very well done and to the crew at Battleborn for once again coming out to support that and most of all helping replace and retire that flag. Another shout out, Assemblyman John D'Mayo has been extremely helpful over the last month. His office has helped numerous people with unemployment. So if anyone is struggling to get their unemployment claims met, I encourage you to reach out to Assemblyman D'Mayo's office. He's very, very responsive and he's helped numerous people get their checks within days. Another shout out goes out to Craig Brotons and Bob Merlo, who was on the phone with this weekend and this week. Those digital tax maps are phenomenal. A lot of times we spend money on things and we never get to see what they're used for. Both of my neighbors' houses have been sold in the last two weeks. They went on the market and sold within a week and they had a serious issue. And I remember these being done and what Stan had told us they were for. They helped me get through that. We identified where the problem could be found right away to remediate the issue. So they were grateful. The program is phenomenal. We are actually in the 20th century with that stuff. So that is excellent. So I encourage anybody ever want to see your tax lines, where those manholes are, they are identified on that tax map. So excellent job with that. Public Works and the mayor, again, another thank you. We've been getting a lot of dumping at the Corliss Avenue facility with people leaving trash around the building. I went and cleaned it up this weekend and the mayor made sure it got taken care of Monday. I'm planning to go back down there Saturday. If anybody has a free hour or two, I think the library should look ready to be open, even though it's not. And it's in desperate need of some landscaping. So I'm going weed pulling. I ran out of time last weekend. If anybody would like to join me 10 o'clock Saturday, I'm going to be cleaning up some of that library weeds. Because frankly, it should look better than it does. And I already told you about August 1st. So that's it. Vicky, I'll send it again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Fulfer?
Sure. Council President Alley have two things. One, I just want to say that, you know, while I can understand and respect the mayor's wishes to comply with the Warren County Prosecutor's Office to maintain relations. I do however wish to object to the apparatuses being closed. The reason I do so is because I haven't found any evidence in executive orders 107, 108, 118 and 133 that call for the shutting down of municipal parks. In fact, to the contrary, it appears the power to close these items was left up to the individual municipalities as long as they maintain compliance with social distancing measures that were laid out in those specific executive orders. And as long as the county freeholders did not pass legislation shutting down these apparatuses. But with that being said, I do respect the mayor's authority and his opinion with regard to the Faulkner Act and his delegated duties. As much as I would like to see them open, you know, I don't always have the right answers and we can only hope that the governor's office or the Warren County Prosecutor's Office eases what they have conveyed to the mayor's office. So I'm hopeful that the parks will be able to open soon. You know, the last thing is that, you know, tonight, a lot was brought up regarding recreation. And I get it, but I, and I don't know what took place 15 years ago because, you know, I wasn't in office, but, you know, the councilwoman was a member of a youth organization at that time. So she would have more information than I. But when we were elected and took office two years ago, we raised the stipends for all the youth organizations and we added the soccer program as well. We didn't charge for town facility use for any organization. We didn't charge any organization for electricity. We paid for equipment. We paid for equipment refurbishing. We didn't, again, we didn't charge rent and we didn't charge fees and we paid for the insurance and the list, you know, goes on. Council Vice President McVeigh and I spoke last year and outlined almost $100,000 over a 10-year period that did not include the stipends that was spent on these teams. And all of this paperwork is available via the Open Public Meetings Act. And you can Oprah these, these, this paperwork. And yes, you know, Mr. Gargano is right. We were concerned about the Firth Youth Center charging fees to the youth organizations. We publicly stated so and we met with the Firth Youth Center president to discuss it. But they are a private organization and they held the right to charge. The one thing that everyone here is overlooking is that in August of 2019, we were notified that the laws changed with regard to the insurance and the taxpayers' monies, which are public funds being spent on private organizations. We immediately called a meeting between all parties, including our insurance company, who clearly outlined that the town could not extend money to nonprofits because it was in fact illegal. They stated that there are specific enumerated exceptions to prohibition against public funds for private organizations. And youth organizations were not one of those exceptions. Attorney Winner, I would defer to him just to verify that what I'm saying is correct. I don't want to speak out of turn.
Give me one second, Councilman.
Okay, before I go forward, I just don't, I don't want to be.
Can you guys hear me? Yes, sir. All right. So you cut out, you cut out on me a little bit there, Councilman Fulfer. If you just repeat your question.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure. So we were talking about the, the, when the insurance company had approached us back in August of 2019 when the laws were changed. And they had stated that there were specific enumerated exceptions to the prohibition of the use of public funds for private organizations. And they did outline that youth organizations were not one of those exceptions. Would I be correct in saying so?
Correct.
So, okay. So from what I understand is that the town could not extend money to nonprofits because in the words of our former insurance company, it was a quote unquote illegal.
Correct. Yeah, there are certain enumerated, there's a general prohibition against donate, what they call donation of public funds for private purposes. There's a general prohibition against that. There are certain enumerated exceptions. Senior centers, volunteer fire departments, emergency squads, where the municipality is permitted by the legislature to provide public funds for otherwise private purposes. Youth organizations are not one of the enumerated exceptions.
Thank you, Attorney Winner. And just to clear it up, you know, there's an enormous amount of misinformation out there regarding the resolution that was passed back in 2014 regarding the insurance, the youth organization resolutions. You know, unlike ordinances, resolutions expire annually. And the fact remains that the, this particular resolution for the insurance was not passed again in 2015, 2016, 2017, 18 or 19. But our insurance company agreed to continue to cover the organizations until they couldn't anymore. You know, it's, you know, I say a lot of words. It's not a vendetta. It's not a personal issue. This was a legitimate legal issue that we could not skirt around. The insurance company was very precise about what could and could not happen. For instance, we were no longer allowed to purchase equipment or provide organizations with equipment due to liability issues. If a child was hurt wearing the town provided equipment, we could have been sued by the private organization. This is what the insurance company laid out for us in this meeting. The amount of time trying to, that we each spent trying to keep these organizations funded or trying to keep the stipends on the table. I mean, I could go on and on, but at the end of the day, the law simply would not allow it. So, you know, we made the only offer that made sense and it was the offer that the insurance company made to us. And that offer was to extend our recreation budget to these organizations. One said yes and the rest said no. We didn't force anyone, nor will we force anyone to join the town recreation program. No one, and I can assure you that no one is closing private organizations, just as we cannot close or control private businesses. The fact remains is that, you know, youth organizations have been around a long time and I expect them to be around a long time after today. We just have, we have an obligation to follow the law.
Hey, thank you, Councilman Fulfer.
You're welcome.
Council Vice President?
Thank you. Usually I save the best for last, but I really have to put this professional out first and foremost. A council president will probably agree with me. Rich Wenner has done an amazing job throughout at least my tenure and way before me. This week he was tasked with a lot to put on this plate because we do have five Tuesdays in this month. Our next meeting is not going to be till after the 4th of July. I know council president and, you know, Councilman Wyatt, when they first came in, they wanted to make an impact along with our, the existing three council members and then Mayor Tersigny. And we kind of, you know, quietly set a goal for the first six months. And then of course, we all know the position that the world is in, not just Phillipsburg. With that being said, Rich Wenner had forged ahead and put together a lot of stuff that was pulled right up to the finish line tonight, at least to get out to the public for first hearing. And it's going to be something that's going to be so advantageous to our community. Not only our community, but to the Lehigh Valley. Rich Wenner, you're an amazing counselor. I thank you every single day. And your work this week was exemplary of, above and beyond what you normally do. The second shout out for me is going to be to the Bernadine May Legion, number 457 crowd. The Flag Day Ceremony up at Walters Park was amazing. Myself, Councilwoman DiGeralmo, Councilman Fulfer, Mayor Tersigny were all there. It was something that was very, very proud, very proud to see. And it was, Battleborn was always amazing. Our fire department, our EMS, it was a real nice community event. And hopefully in, in years to come, we can get more information on that. Of course, during the COVID situation, we're going to have a less of a crowd, but moving forward, these public displays of respect and appreciation, hopefully be more heavily attended. My number three shout out is going to be to, again, each week, I think he's been employed, DJ Capazie is doing an amazing job. The Walters Park wet down idea with our council recreation representative, Councilman Fulfer, is amazing in coordination with Mayor Tersigny and our fire departments, what we're going to line up up at Walters Park. We are actually bringing Walters Park back to life. It went through a four-year little quiet period, but is now coming back to life. DJ, your ideas for the park is amazing. I know I came to you with, with my personal confidant who I drive around with on the weekends. We take a look at the town and we kind of merge ideas. But the, what we're talking about possibly in the win, you know, our winter months, maybe merging with the Chamber of Commerce or what we can do or Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce, of course, is the Walters Winter Wonderland was also an amazing idea and our 12-month use of our tennis courts and flipping that over into a skating park, ice skating park, like it was in the seventies. These are things coming from a 30-year-old young man that is just amazes me and we're moving forward as a community. I said it before, I'll say it again, and DJ, we trust. My fourth shout out is going to go to Councilman Wyatt because my, the worst thing, the worst thing I have as far as a councilman is my sore knowledge. The sore knowledge to me is it's still, I still get lost. Councilman Wyatt, if not for you and your knowledge and your experience and all of that and keeping me on track, I can't thank you enough. And more importantly, it's the former first lady's birthday today. I know you're celebrating it grandly a little south of Phillipsburg. So Councilman Wyatt, please pass that on to your lady. And I want to thank you again for your expertise in all of what you provide me, at least in my, my weakest point, you're, one of your strongest points. I thank you as a councilman. For, I'm going to thank Councilman Fulfer. I'm going to give Councilman Fulfer a shout out because he so adequately explained our recreation situation and what we have legally with the insurance, our former administration and what we were faced with and where we had to move forward liability wise with our community. I'm just going to leave it at that. It's a complete liability issue. It is not a personal issue. It is a liability issue by the town in conjunction how we're morphing, moving forward as everything I explained with the recreation director and the mayor and how we're working it. I'm very confident everything is going to fall right into place. I'm going to also bring it down just a little bit before I go into the high point is, I'm going to explain the reason why I was the lone vote on the former mayor Ellis vote. This, it was, I voted no. I was the only one and I explained why in my, in my discussion, but I'm going to tell you this. I was running. I wasn't a councilman. I was in the audience. I knew Blaine Feely in 1972. He was one of my first friends when I moved to Phillipsburg. I know Blaine's different. I know we all know Blaine, but I'll tell you what. Blaine has never lied to me, nor has he lied to anyone I know. And he's a man of integrity as far as that goes. He'll tell you, you may not want to hear what he has to say, but he's, he's never lied to anybody. Now I know Steve Ellis. And he's no blame feeling. I want to end it with this. Tonight we discussed a new municipal pool moving into 2021. Tonight we discussed Riverside Way. Finally, going out public, finally, without words, actually something you can put your hands on and say, there's going to be something on that parking lot soon. We don't know what it is. Council will discuss it. We'll figure it out, but it's not going to be a parking lot. We have a new municipal building and more importantly, for all the municipal workers, because I'm going to be done with this soon, but the municipal workers for years to come are going to go back home where they should be. And it's going to be through a P3 program, which could be expanded into other areas of town. Possibly the Armory down the future. We'll talk about that maybe in July. I don't know. But you know what? The town's moving forward and things are getting, things are actually, things are actually happening. And I'm very excited about that. Council President, I do thank you for your time. I thank everybody for listening to me. More importantly, there's going to be a 4th of July we're going to miss. So I want to wish is all a safe and happy 4th of July. Go celebrate. You're not going to hear our mouths for about maybe three or four weeks. Some of yous like that, some of yous may not like that. Council President, I turn it over to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I'd like to thank everyone who continues to adapt and make things possible where we thought they might not be possible, even though things are still slowed down and more difficult to move forward with. I know all the members and employees of the Phillipsburg governing body, council, mayor, employees, DPW, they all continue to push forward and work hard for you. There's still a lot of new projects and businesses coming to town and they bring with them fresh ideas and employment opportunities. I had the pleasure of meeting with the owners of Apothecarium who plan on opening in the next few months. Hopefully by the end of summer, I met with them, the mayor. They're the medical marijuana dispensary. They're going to be hiring in the near future. That's another business that will be hiring. They prefer to hire local. I saw that the Envision Center was helping people to apply with White Claw. That's a great thing for them to be doing to help all local people with Councilwoman DiGeralmo. Perhaps they could work together with Apothecarium as well. You know, giving our local people the first shot is important.
Council President? Yes, who's the contact for Envision that the people would go to?
I, Miss Day?
A vet, a vet day?
Is that Envision, Miss Day? Yes.
Okay, I just want to write that down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So there you go. We now have outside dining. The mayor worked really hard to get that done very quick before the deadline or before the reopening, I should say. Dining accommodations might be unconventional, but they're kind of fun now. It's different. It's energetic and it's amusing. I know a lot of people work in that industry and, you know, they get a kick out of it the same way that the diners do. So make the best of a bad situation. And that's what works right now. My point is that progress doesn't, isn't necessarily taking place by the same means it used to. But hard work, community involvement and focus have to still be the same to keep working towards improvement. And I, you know, there's a lot of stuff I don't know, but I'm always willing to learn. We found that out tonight. So I'd like to thank everybody and.
Motion.
Second. Favor?
Hi.
Thank you.